To the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm not running this show.
You were.
It's Renee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're on, Madam Chair.
And I'll open the Board of Assessors meeting.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Board of Assessors meeting on November 22nd, 5 o'clock.
Okay, I think, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's my pleasure to offer three, one, two, three, four, five total abatements spread over three years, 19, 20, 21. Keep in mind that I can't, well, you can't. You can go back three years, the Board of Selectmen can't. So if you decide to abate 2019, then you'll have to do that wearing a hat of the Board of Selectmen. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Exactly. Number one, 2021 abatements, there are two. First one is account 742, TJ Gett, everybody knows TJ. You know, he owns Dudley Island. When I first came here, Dudley Island was in resource protection. Over the years, I questioned that finding and when Maine FEMA released their new floodplain maps. I verified, and had it verified by Maine floodplain management, ruled that the island was misclassified as resource protection. None of its, you know, of the billable portions in the floodplain. And it was an illegal classification. So I said, well, then I'm going to assess those island parcels like any other residential parcel. And I went into the Shoreland zoning ordinance and discovered that there was a statement, there's a statement in our Shoreland zoning ordinance that constitutes an illegal taking. And that's been verified by me and Renee with the town attorney. But the statement in there that was added after the Shoreland zoning ordinance was adopted, and it was added as a result of this day regular town meeting. Rogers Island, as you all know, is, was, maybe you don't, Rogers Island was a subdivision.
Rogers? Rogers?
Rogers, I'm sorry.
That's the, the trees.
No, no, Rogers Island was a subdivided parcel of land. Maine Coes Heritage bought that property, I believe, and put it into open space. So that land was, that island was taken out of development.
Just clarification, it's not Rogers, that's the town owned island.
I know, but which one is it?
Dudley.
Can we, Dudley's the little one. Dudley is the one that TJ owns.
TJ owns Dudley.
Yes.
Rogers is.
The town, that's, that's the bird sanctuary.
Okay, well, what was the other one?
Tree.
Tree.
Okay. And that was a subdivision, I stand corrected, excuse me, pardon. Anyway, they took that out of development potential and it's in an open space of a town. But that island had been subdivided and ruled as a subdivisional parcel of land. Here comes TJ with Dudley, puts him for a building permit, goes before the planning board. Next thing you know, you got folks walking in, politicizing that his building permit application. And the next thing you know, they have a town meeting and decide to deny him a building permit. And I found this mysterious statement in our Shoreland zoning ordinance that was added. It says that all islands in the waters of Lebec are undevelopable.
Now, according to, when was that added? Do you know what year?
And you have no idea who?
Oh, it happened as a result of a meeting that was held to deny. You know, we, we had all the, the Land Trust people showed up, Land Coes Heritage at a meeting. You know, basically weighing in on it. And then they had a vote. And he got denied his building permit at that time.
Jim, I thought that was a state thing, that you couldn't build on an island under such and such a size.
I remember this happened, I, I don't remember this part of it, but I do remember TJ.
There is, there is no general prohibition against developing on islands. If you drive up and down the coast of Maine, you'll see houses.
But I, I meant by size, the size of the island.
Well, I don't know. You know, I don't, I don't, I've not seen any such thing. I've seen a registry of islands and they're just registered, you know. But I've seen no generalized statement that says you can't develop, you can't develop an island because of its size.
So, so these abatements here that we're looking at, if we assume that in 1920 and '21, you pay taxes at a rate of residential or?
Well, he did.
And that's the, I mean.
So, well, there's more to the story, let me, and I'll, I'll bring it forward. So I got involved and I was like, okay, I'm, I'm an assessor, an assessor for the town of Lebec. I'm all for assessing every bit of, of developable land to raise the revenues so that the town can run and enjoy its being. And that's my job. So I'm always looking for errors and omissions in things like zoning ordinances and restrictions. So I found it, I found this statement, I challenged it, I, we called the town attorney, she said, yep, that's bogus. There was no, as far as we know, there was no general town annual meeting or warrant. You know, anyway, so moving forward, I went ahead and assessed both parcels over there in that island. And TJ got a permit to build and it was quite restricted because of this NERPA floodplain era. So I had the state look at it and they, they, they created what's called a letter of math amendment, which amended the maps to indicate that, that it's all bogus. Somebody just made that up out of their mind.
So the whole island is still buildable?
Yeah. Well, at least that's what I thought. Then TJ came and I said, okay, he wondered, he wondered about the, the assessment of that island. And, cause I, basically, I, I thought about it, I thought, no, I'm, I'm not obligated. If I know something is an error and a wrong, I, I don't have to, I don't have to obey a law that the town attorney has told me, you know, not positive. Well, anyway, so I assessed it, he came, we talked, and he said, the one, the one, the one island that you assessed, I believe is unbuildable. So I said, well, I don't know that, so let's go take a look at it. So I got his boat, we went out there, went around it, went, yep, this, the little piece to the left, you know, it's, here's the pier, and here's 34 and 34A. 34A is the smaller piece and the way it's situated, it is not buildable. So I'm here tonight to say that, ask for an abatement for that bill for 97224 for the past three years. Okay, that's what that 19, 20, and '21 are for.
It was my understanding that TJ wanted to raise sheep on that island. And that, I don't recall him talking about dwelling per se, but he did want a sheep. He was gonna have these wonderful sheep.
Yeah, see, he was, he was told that he couldn't even graze a sheep over there. But I have a statement in FEMA that it's 100% usable for agricultural purposes.
Is there water? Huh? Water?
I don't know.
All around it.
Water everywhere in the county.
But not a drop to drink, yes. So, and there's certainly no electricity, there's no, there's no like spring or anything like that.
Not that I'm aware of, but I'm not, I didn't do that kind of a survey.
Yeah.
But I imagine, you know, the biggest aqua, the largest aquifer in this part of Maine is right out here and goes under Campabella Island, under the, it's all, it's huge. Aquifer bubble of water, freshwater, you can drill down, you know, probably hit some feet and shoot a geyser 100 feet in the air.
Don't tell Poland Springs, okay?
So, okay.
So anyway. Basically, in this meeting, we can only go back two years.
Right, but you can, as the Board of Selectmen, you can act on, I just put the information here, request of your own volition. You're under no obligation under the law to do that, but given the circumstances and the general confusion about it all, I think it's the right thing to do. The other, the other portion stands, is all buildable. This will still assess for, it isn't like it's not gonna assess for something, I think it's gonna assess for $30,000, something like that. Otherwise it would assess for like 90. The other lot does assess for about 90, so. Okay, any questions?
Nope.
No, not at all.
I'm a little confused.
Just a little?
Just a little. So you're giving him an abatement because he was told he couldn't build?
And now it's buildable.
Right, so.
No, it's not buildable.
So he's giving an abatement on the half of the land that isn't buildable that they were charged.
I, I, I assessed it, we came back.
I'm gonna be clear on that.
We came back and said, I don't believe that, that's buildable.
So you're giving an abatement on the shoreland zone. You're giving the abatement on the half that's not buildable.
Correct, yeah, okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Nordic delights, this was a comedy of errors, there are two lots out there. One is A and one is just, you know, the regular lot.
We're off the island now.
We're done with it.
Yeah, we're moving on to the north side.
This is the downtown.
Yes, this is right down here at six.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Where?
Peacock.
Peacock.
Six Peacock Rain, and it, six Peacock Rain is an interesting place.
10 minutes.
There's one lot down there that's .12 acres. And that would be the, the little one right here. The one beside it, and, and, you know, these are joined together and they're bigger, they're like, and, and this one is, this one is A and this one is, oh, 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 the main, you know, this subscript A, and then this is the main lot. It has the same exact number as this one, map and lot number, only this one is an A at the end. So you go like map 3-1-A, map 3-1. Well, interestingly, I note, this one is joined with this one, and this comes from 1.12 acres. And this one by itself is .12 acres. So given the, given, given my dyslexia at times, you've got, you've got four designations that are similar but not the same. So they kinda got crossed and that's why these abatements are for, so they're just things. And normalized down. Any questions?
They're still up for grabs, so.
No, this is the, well, Jimmy Simmons sold this, I thought, was sold to some folks. And they've been negotiating for quite a long time, I don't think this deal was consummated.
Ah. I know what you're saying.
This one has been sold. All right, and there's a little house on it. And so the purchaser has talked with me and, and this, these, these abatements are, are of my own, our own volition. In other words, Bobby Peacock hasn't been ringing my phone off of the, but the perspective buyer has. And I thought, well, you don't wanna pass something through like that.
I have one question.
Sure.
What, what size does a lot have to be before you can build on that? What do you think?
It depends on its status.
Like, what, one acre, could you build on that?
If it's grandfathered and it's a lot of record, one back prior to, then you know, you can, you can build something on a lot downtown Lebec that's been there since, you know, forever. If it's as big as this room. But if it's a new, a lot of, a new lot of record, then there's, there's several categories depending upon the district that it's in, you know. And, and the typical lot downtown here is like, I think it's 20,000 square feet out, out of town. And in town, I forget, 7,000 square feet, I think is the minimum new lot of record that you can establish.
.1 just sounds so small, Jimmy.
Huh?
.1 acre just sounds so small.
It is, because we have tons of them right downtown here. You know, and these, these little tiny homes sit on it.
Yeah, thank you, I just wondered.
Yeah. You all okay? All right, so I, I asked for your forbearance, is that correct, right?
Or indulgence, whichever.
Or unanimous consent.
So you can only abate the 2021s in this meeting, and then you have to do the 20, 20 and the 19?
I can do 20 and 21.
Oh, 20 and 21 in this meeting.
We can do 20 and 21 in this meeting. But you'll have to rule, you know, that's, that's just a conversation between you and, no, between you and, and the tax collector, Suzette, the treasurer.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept these abatements from 2020, 2021.
I'll second. All, do you want to stay in all favor? All favor.
Well, thanks for your patience and.
Thanks for your diligence and for the information.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I'd recommend to the planning board is that they begin to work on rewriting the Shoreland zoning ordinance and not forget to get rid of this restriction or else make it legal in the, in the Shoreland zoning ordinance.
Let me ask you a question that we are going to be coming up to fairly soon. Will that be entirely a planning board decision, or is that something that might come up under the next 10-year comprehensive plan?
I, I think, I think generally it's good policy to, in a broad way, spell out where you want development, what type of development, whether it's limited commercial, residential, whatever. And, you know, and paint broad swaths, you know, across the land and the island and.
Sure.
So you're talking almost like a zoning ordinance?
I think, I think he's talking about zoning suggestions.
And here's the thing, yeah, and, and the thing is, is it should, all of the zoning districts in the Shoreland zoning ordinance, the districts that are set forth, should be clarified.
Yes.
The Shoreland zoning ordinance has needed to be rewritten ever since I've been here.
I agree with you 100%.
Since 2005. It has yet to be done and it needs to be done.
I thought I remembered the two terms.
The only amendments to the Shoreland zoning ordinance have been those that have been impressed on the town by the state and those are generalized, here's some great ideas kinda things, you know. And the forestry plants, the forestry portions, it used to be that folks would contact me. Or the, yeah, and, and they would work through the town locally. And sometime back, the town was offered a choice because there was a lot of discontent amongst the the land people, the timber people. So the state legislature decided, tax company decided, just let the forestry department handle that. And the town was then given the opportunity to decide if it wanted to participate in any revenue opportunities or not participate. You know, but we did not want to be hands-on trying to manage timber harvesting, you know, what we do. So they let the professionals do it with the taxpayers and the timber companies. And then we get notified now. Now, that was voted on at a general town meeting, you know, and approved as a change to our Shoreland zoning ordinance. But that's the only one that's happened that I've been, there are others that may occur that, that will reflect accurately what, what we're doing, you know, and what we can do. So, yeah.
Want to adjourn?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the assessors meeting.
Okay, thanks so much.
Okay. Always a pleasure.
All in favor here.
We've kinda run the meeting, yeah.
Yeah, we're just mutual, we're so socialistic here.
All right, so thank you, Jim.
The great, the great Mr. Ed arrived.
I had commented that on the agenda.
Oh, oh, these need to be signed.
Oh, right.
There, or wouldn't it?
We've already motioned to vote it, yeah.
But make sure that they're current.
Are we in the select board meeting here?
We're just wrapping this up.
I was gonna make the motion through the 19s in there, so we shouldn't sign the 19s.
Jim, are the 19s in that?
Pardon?
Are the 19s in there?
Yes. All of them are in there.
Yeah, well, we can vote on the 19s. Well, we will at some point.
You can sign it and give it to Suzette, that way she'll have.
Yeah.
And official.
Okay, okay, got it, got it.
An official directive. Or give it to me and I'll be able to do that. But in any event, you.
This is 2020.
You have to sign it as the Board of Selectmen, technically.
We'll pick it up when we open the meeting.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was at the bottom.
You gotta hold that.
No, the 19 is right here in the line.
Okay. Hold it, that's okay, we'll keep it right there.
All right. We are open for business.
We're opening the select board meeting.
Are you gonna run this?
You.
Oh, all right, I will open the.
Office assist, if you need it.
The November the 22nd board meeting. We've, our old business is the pellet boilers. Oh, this is here, assigned warrants. Could I have a motion to sign warrants?
I'll make a motion to sign the warrants.
All right. All those in favor?
Can I make an out of non-agenda motion that we sign the tax assessors' request for an abatement on the 2019 debate, we think that we're not in the assessment.
I'll put that in other business. So Nancy motions to sign the 2019.
Second, I'll second it.
We all for it?
All those in favor?
Are you in favor?
In favor.
And one of the. Those that are, okay.
There you go. Do I have a move, a motion to approve the minutes of November the 10th, select board meeting?
I can't vote on it, that wasn't me.
You were not, you could vote, you probably shouldn't vote. All right, I will second that, and all those in favor.
Okay.
We have to get out of this COVID mess so we have a better attendance record. Okay. Now we're going into old business pellet boiler.
Yes. So I've been trying to contact the one certified heating company that is certified to work on the boiler system at Garage, it's a Radiant Heat. Huntley's is the only one in the area, according to the company, that's certified to work on it.
Jeff Huntley is.
Textes, I've called, messaged, I can't get ahold of him at all.
I'll see him next Thursday.
We talked, we talked with Ricky, he's not really in favor of that.
He's the only one with a solid fuel license.
Yes, that's it, yeah. I, I just assumed.
To put the pellet boiler in there, they wanted it.
Or even work on it. Because you gotta hold a solid fuel license, because I wanted to go for mine. But the problem is, I would have to quit Easter and go work for Jeff Huntley for six months in order to get mine and then pass the state test. You would think they would make it easier for somebody.
We've got auctions in national coming up to look at the fire record reporting out to bid. And I would, I would really like to be able to add this to the list of available equipment.
I agree. I'll make a motion now to get added to that fire truck auction.
I'll second that. Good idea, all in favor? Next on the agenda is we need to sign appointments for the comprehensive plan committee.
This is something that's in old business because you had already voted to do this last week. So this is just the paperwork to do that. So you have Ben Lebec and Nancy Harrison. Yeah, you already voted this, we got made a motion. Well, it's another, that could possibly show up there.
Now, new business, weekend meetings?
Carol asked us to be on here for discussion. She does, she, she thinks Friday past 4 o'clock, Saturday, Sunday, there shouldn't be any committee meetings because people are so busy.
I totally agree.
I agree. I, I, do we have any on weekends? No.
This is my fault.
I shouldn't have known.
This was my fault, we threw together an emergency shellfish meeting because we had to make a couple changes and we wanted to get a beach closed and of course we needed a boat and a quorum and.
And the Thursday was the holiday.
And Thursday was the holiday, so we did Friday at 6 o'clock and I mean.
It was an emergency.
Yeah. It was, we had a full, other than Carol, we had a full committee there and actually accomplished a whole ton of a lot more.
Then I think if, if we need to change any wording, I think it should be unless an emergency arises.
Correct, I totally agree with you.
Yeah.
Cause something like that comes up.
Yeah, and the thing is, even to turn around and like, say, we get red tied and they close down here, we can. we can, if we have a meeting, I can get one of the other beaches open in five days to turn around and safety net.
So we'll amend the wording to no more of these meetings Friday or Saturday or Sunday unless an emergency call for it, right?
Friday's after 6:00, 5:00, whatever.
Unless it's...
Right.
I agree. Motion?
Could I have a motion or do I...
So...
Yes, okay.
All in favor?
All in favor?
The weekend meetings would be cost to this Friday after 4:00.
Yeah, and then through Sunday.
I think I know what she's in.
Well, there are a few things. I'm on the agenda for something.
You're on probably for the shellfish committee yet, which happens to be next.
Fantastic.
And Amanda is here to talk about something that has to do with shellfish.
So I was asked to choose between the plan committee and the deputy warden. Yep, because of a conflict, because I can't criticize myself.
Yes, you can.
And I'm very good at it.
Where's the conflict?
The conflict is that supposedly if a shell fisherman has an issue with some decisions or something and they bring to an appeal something that a warrant, you know, they were summoned or something for somebody and they come before the shellfish committee, if the person issuing the summons is on the committee that's hearing the complaint, that's a conflict of interest.
Oh, once you get a summons...
That's from our attorney, that's, you know...
Once you get a summons, doesn't it go to court?
Well, they have an option to come before the shellfish committee?
Oh.
That is one of the options?
Well, that's, that's based on sentencing, I think.
I don't know. I just know that Carol should...
Because if, if the license say gets suspended or revoked...
That's state.
Then, well, no, not, if, say, we have a town closure and the person is caught digging in the town closure, the state can't enforce it, but we could still write a summons. You would get three violations, your license is suspended, of which then you can file an appeal with the plan committee to have the suspension overturned. And then if you don't get your decision from there, then it could be brought in front of the selectmen. Oh, I've overhauled our ordinance. I've read every word of it.
So back to this conflict, Amanda, which have you chosen?
I chose the deputy warden.
The deputy warden.
Because our...
To continue but to be the deputy warden.
Basically enforcement has always been our weakest spot. That's our, we have a really strong clam committee. The clam committee will get all my files, all my notes, everything. I mean, as far as closures, all they gotta do is put the date on the top and press send.
And that committee is so strong, because you...
Now, is this shellfish, that she's giving up, is that a done deal? Is that, you've already given it up?
I've sent in my resignation.
Continue back.
And have they voted on it and accepted it?
That's us.
That's what we are doing.
That's what you guys...
But do you want them to stay on until...
Well, the thing, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna help with the transition. And as I told them, I'm still gonna be at the meetings as a warden. So if they have questions that are not even pertaining to that, I'm still there to help. I've submitted the forms, I've came...
Has your replacement been hired yet?
They have to decide amongst themselves who's gonna replace me.
Okay, okay, fine. Do we need to do anything at this level?
So Carol has also resigned from the shellfish committee, from the select board representative.
Oh, okay.
Nancy has agreed to...
Be replace her.
No, we have to accept it.
Oh, good luck.
Well, I'll make a motion with regret that we accept the man's resignation.
Yes.
Well, I did want to add to it that it's, we're not completely lost because I entered this as it always being, me being deputy warden as a plan B. Once I have the certification, if we start struggling on the clam committee side, if I am to resign from deputy warden, I don't lose my certification. So I can then be reappointed on whim and it's about protecting the ordinance and getting the certification. So not all our eggs are in one basket.
I, I have to say to Amanda, you've come a long way from a rock weed harvest.
Yeah.
And proudly so.
Or the crazy 18-year-old in my '94 Ford Tempo with 200 bucks in my pocket.
So vote. I know you've motioned to second it, just do it.
Yes, all in favor?
Yeah.
With the motion.
Thank you. Your hard work.
And a motion, no.
Before, before we do this.
Is this like what we think is, like, out of... I know nothing about toughest. I understand from what I understand.
You learn fast, most of it is pretty quick.
I appreciate the reasoning behind it. I didn't realize that unless the town keeps wardens of their own, all the clam plots would become under the state jurisdiction. And as a southern Maine former resident for 20-something years, I watched clamming go away from, you know, Gomfud Starborough, you know, that just went away. So I give a lot of credit to each of the local, yeah.
First rule clam club, protect the ordinance.
I think, I think also Nancy, you have a sense that a lot of the local people are very proud of what they have here and protective of it, which has kept it alive, at least. And I don't know anything about that either.
Yeah, I mean, I don't even know where all our clam plots are or, you know, ordinance.
Well, also seeing, because I'm also on Shack, the Shellfish Advisory Council for the state. So they have branched off to a subcommittee that is supposed to overhaul the ordinance requirements for the whole entire state.
Is it gonna get harder or...
It can be. I'm co-chairing it, but that doesn't mean any of my recommendations will actually do anything because we're talking about DMR here. So Cole, who is one, like, right-hand man to Pat Killer on the shellfish side, wants to beef up enforcement, requiring a town to either have so many wardens per digger or so many wardens per acreage. And if it was acreage, we're screwed.
I was just gonna say.
Because we have the most acres in the state and we only have 50 diggers.
Yeah.
While you can go down to Waldo Borough, they have a third of what we have, but they have 140 diggers.
Can you dig on all the property, though? I mean, is it a nice picture of our property? Can you dig on all of it?
Most of it. The only one that we cannot is the person that's off of the tip of Norfolk Beck. I can't remember his name, but he is the only one that I can think of who has a old colonial deed that predates the Fall and Fishing Act. So it even overrides that. And he's the only one that can turn around and even tell Marine Patrol, get the hell off my little...
Richard Oz, yeah.
That's right.
And he, he's the only one that has given the clam diggers a hard time. There's a couple other colonial deeds, but they don't care.
That's one of the oldest pieces.
Well, him and Marilyn Ness got into it because you owned that little piece that had the trailer. And at one point in time, there was a sign, "Diggers enter your at, your own risk, except such and such, no trespassing." Oh, yes, excuse me, the little tin's eight, nine years ago.
All right, so when do shellfish meet? First Mondays of the month, that's it.
Okay, now we still gotta accept Carol's resignation, right?
And appoint Nancy.
I will make a motion to accept Carol, Carol Benz's resignation.
I'll second that. And then you, would you want to go ahead and appoint?
All in favor? And I'll make a motion that we...
Don't do it, don't care.
Put Nancy on the clam committee.
Shellfish committee.
Yes, the shellfish, sorry.
Do you have the copy of the licensing plan? Does that...
Do I get that?
Second, that's a good thing.
You're in favor and I'm all in.
I am very much in favor, yes, yes.
I sent you a picture of it.
Oh.
You got it?
Because that actually, we got an email today that approved by DMR.
Don't know anything about it. I don't know anything about shellfish clamming or anything.
Me either.
But I'm fascinated.
Can I at least get on the agenda for the next meeting?
So we can get that done.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, I wish you all the luck. I mean, you're really an ambitious person and a well...
I'm just crazy.
Well, no, which, you know, the success of any job is doing your homework, and you do your homework.
Yeah, which is probably half the reason why DMR has a love-hate relationship with me.
See, there you go. You can't keep everybody happy.
Well, you guys have a good night.
Thank you, good night, Amanda.
Animal control, it's just a...
Oh, yeah, we have...
An update from the animal control. I've had two interviews.
Oh, cool.
So maybe we can schedule a special select board meeting next week to look at the applications and where and...
Yes, great, absolutely great. That's lovely, lovely. Okay, and now we go to Wanda Reed Town Celebration Committee.
Thank you. And here's Natalie Nance who are involved, whom, now Natalie is our treasurer. And, and, and she's one of those busy bees for us. But I just wanted to update everything and we tried to add whatever we knew what else was going on in the back that weekend. And I have a specific question. We, we, on the tree lighting Friday night, we, we are having a bench built for Stacy Simonsen. And we had, it's a private donation bench and we'd like to do, we'd like to put it by the tree. And I think there was a question about that, but like they put one at the monument, you know, God love Willie and Jimmy. And so I wonder if we can put this one, if it's gonna be sturdy wood, you know, bench, if we could put it by the tree. And why we're having this for Stacy, because for years he helped put up the lights on the tree for years. And so that's, you know, we just wanted to acknowledge that. And, but we've got, everything else is all lined up and ready to go.
Good.
Yeah. And we've got, like I said, guys, we've got so much help this year, it just makes a big endeavor.
Well, that's great.
And we pray for no storms. I've watched those lights go up to my house.
Yeah.
And then I see the wind come through and it's like, oh.
I'm all for the bench, Wanda, 100%.
I just have one question on that. Does the town own that land or...
That is a herbic.
Right, and that would be my only piece about it, is it part of the attached bench? Can you do it on earth?
No, they're pretty okay, they're okay.
Some other benches, there's a bench there that's granite and this is wood.
Basically what the rules are is no political sound.
Right, I remember that last time around, election year.
Okay.
And so anyway, I appreciate it. I always appreciate like the town, they give us money for it and, you know, always you guys and your support.
Do you want to have a vote on the bench?
I'll make a motion, we let them put the bench by the tree, but the state decides.
I second.
Thank you.
Not, all those in favor? Do you have a, like, it's not too close to the tree, right?
No, no, no. I was looking at it today, Rachel, now somebody's adding two more benches down there.
Yes.
And they look so nice, you know, around the tree. But I was thinking more almost towards the road a little bit, like people are walking.
Yeah, to sit down and, yes. Yeah, I do see people stop occasionally. And during the summer, I saw some people in an altered state sit down there.
Oh, boy.
Stayed for quite a while.
Yeah. One thing Stacy always did for us too is, you know, he fixed, oh, God, like Rachel just said, he fixed the...
He fixed everything. Anytime I needed help, he was there.
Yeah.
He was wonderful and with a smile on his face.
Yeah, always.
He had Barry Cox.
No, I'm sensible, yeah.
No. Well, thank you for all the work. Can I say one quick thing to you guys, because we talk about this a lot. But when we were growing up here, we talked about this a lot, especially on the holidays. But we had Yonovskis downtown, it was the store. And every Christmas, like all of us old people, they had, we were not, we couldn't wait. And Yonovski had fish for us. One year she had turtles, but we all got to go upstairs with Santa. So that was our big treat.
Sure.
And that, I think that's like important for us to keep continuing to do whatever we do.
The tradition, yeah. How nice.
Thank you so much.
That is... Good. Next. Other business, line of credit documents for St. Harbor. Yeah, I think Carol, Carol had talked about this before.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
I'll make a motion that we sign the line of credit documents with St. Harbor.
All right, we'll second that.
All in favor?
Do we have any bids for that particular...
Yes, we got one.
Oh, goodness, hope it's good. So the second replacement grant, the emergency one that has been put forth, we did get a bid in. I had contacted four contractors, invited them all to bid. They thanked me and said, we're about two weeks out, so. But we did get one, 53 carrying place coal roads.
That's for the...
Yeah, that's...
Is it where we need these?
Lift stations, pump stations.
But it has to be certified on water front, to work on water front.
Yep, yep.
So you're gonna need a service. I, I think we will.
This is a, the town of Florida, prepared by Dean Bradshaw, Danny Hall. The bid for all those systems is $19,800.
Okay, there's the amount, $19,800. Danny, oh, this is...
Dan Hall, Dan Hall.
When is this supposed to be done?
They needed this in the fall. Now, this, you don't, you can't award the bid until the state has approved of it, but you can, you can do it pending the state's approval.
I'll make a motion to accept H and S's bid pending the state's approval, yeah.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you very much. And that's all.
Ooh, I get push on.
Public comments.
Any public comments?
Where, where they all go?
Do we add your... And then get your okay and get out of there.
I'll make a motion, will you adjourn me?
I second that.
Thank you. All in favor?